All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is October 17, 2022, 5:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Cape Girardeau City Council. Welcome to everyone. Thank you all for being here. We will start with an invocation by Pastor David Mead of Bethel Assembly in Cape Girardeau, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please all stand and join us in that.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for the life and the health and the freedom that you've given us to be here today. God, I ask for the wisdom to govern in these times, that you would give us the wisdom to take care of our community, to be concerned about justice, to be concerned about taking care of our neighbors, Lord, even in times of disagreement. God, I ask that you would give us the wisdom to make good decisions. I ask that you would give us concern for our friends, concern for our neighbors, and that you would protect our schools, that you would protect each of us as we are trying to communicate how we think this city should be run today. Lord, thank you again for who you are, for giving us the wisdom to be here, to giving us the guidance today for this agenda. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have no items in our study session tonight. We do have several presentations. All right, we will start with our beautiful Business Property of the Month, which is Red Banner Coffee, located at 1 North Spanish Street here in Cape Girardeau. I believe Robbie Britt is here. Would you come on forward and let us thank you for your beautiful and important property here in Cape? Thank you.
Thanks for everyone that took the time to come by and take pictures and choose us. Credit where it's due, we support other businesses locally. So Chrissy at the Plant Ladies Corner and also Dana at Clementine, they basically created the beauty that got us the award. So thanks to them as well.
Awesome. There you go. There's for that, and I think we have a picture here real quick. Hang tight. All right, next, I have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And if I could, please have Leslie Washington and Jessica Hill, Director of the Safe House of Southeast Missouri, come forward. Thank you, ladies. All right, I have a proclamation that I'm honored to read. Whereas for over 31 years, the Safe House of Southeast Missouri has provided comprehensive services to women and children in the Cape Girardeau community who have experienced domestic violence. And whereas the mission of the Safe House is to provide safe refuge and support services to those affected by domestic violence and abuse, to provide training and education to increase awareness of and prevention of domestic violence, and to advocate for social change and public policy that protect a person's right to live free of abuse. And whereas over 650 cases of domestic violence were reported in Cape Girardeau County and its surrounding counties in the past year. And whereas the Safe House received more than 750 crisis calls from victims of domestic violence and provided a safe shelter for 200 women and children in the past year. And whereas the Safe House for Women served an additional 450 individuals with counseling, advocacy, case management, and support services through their outreach office. And whereas domestic violence is not confined to any specific group or people, but affects people of all races, backgrounds, economic levels, education levels, family structures, ages, and religions. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates members of our community's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity in the form of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse. And whereas advocates, professionals, volunteers, and community members concerned with domestic violence will devote the month of October to raising awareness about the causes, interventions, and prevention of this devastating crime. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stacy Kinder, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby declare the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and reaffirm this city's commitment to ending domestic violence in our community.
Good evening. Thank you for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month for the month of October. We do have several of those statistics that were listed in this proclamation that set records for us at the Safe House in terms of the number of individuals and families that we're serving, as well as the different types of services that we've provided. Could not do any of the work that we do without the support of the City of Cape and Cape Girardeau PD and everyone in the community that is helping us to end domestic violence here in Cape Girardeau. So thank you very much.
All right, I have one more thing I wanted to present. Going a little off script, but I'd like to make an unofficial presentation to a lot of different individuals, organizations, businesses, and government agencies that accomplished so much in so little time two weeks ago, when the city water main broke here in Cape. Actually, it was exactly two weeks ago. It was pretty much during our council meeting, as I recall. I would first like to call up to the front some city staff who are very accustomed to working hard behind the scenes. So this is going to embarrass a few, but I would ask you to awkwardly, awkwardly stand up here for just a bit while I read a long list of other stuff. Dr. Kenny Haskin, would you please come on down? Gail Conrad, our Cape City Clerk, is she here? Yes, she is, of course, she's been taking pictures. Nicolette Brennan, Cape Public Information Manager. Come, no, yep, you gotta come forward. Stan Polovic, see, come on up, sir. Cape Public Works Director. And Randy Morris, our Cape Fire Department Chief. If you all would please come forward. So before I talk about these guys just a little bit, I'd like to read a list and say thank you on behalf of the city to various agencies involved in helping the city have water when our system was down for a few days. So bear with me, but this really deserves, deserves some, some reading. Alliance Water Resources, obviously, first and foremost. The Missouri Rural Water Association provided workers. The City of Carruthersville provided workers. The City of St. Genevieve provided workers. The Cape County Emergency Management Agency provided support and communications. The State Emergency Management Agency provided support and communications. The City of Jackson and its fire department provided water interconnection and water backfill. The Missouri Department of Natural Resources provided much-needed support. The East County Fire Protection District provided fire apparatus in the form of tankers and manpower. The Gordonville Fire Protection District provided, provided fire tankers and water tankers and manpower. Jim Watkins with CERT provided volunteer coordination. Teen Challenge provided volunteers for water distribution. Jane O'Connell with the Red Star Neighborhood Revival Group provided food to workers. The Cape County Highway Department provided water transport. And then there was a lot of water donated to our citizens who did not have any. And I know that was a huge concern right away because we discovered that a lot of water was already headed down to Florida for some much-needed help with a lot of people. But, so there was some scrambling and some concern there, but a lot of, a lot of other folks stepped in and really provided a lot of help. We wanted to mention that. The Convoy of Hope out of Springfield, Pastor Phil Rup was involved in getting them, helping donate water. The Cape Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Ken's Ace Hardware, Buckeyes, Red Cross, Pepsi, Orgill in Sykeston, the Do-It-Best in Sykeston, the Lowe's in Sykeston, Coalfield Distributing, Simo Food Bank, St. Louis Area Food Bank, Rural King, Perry County, just the whole county, and the Walmart in Cape Girardeau. So, folks, if I, if I left anyone off of that list, I apologize, but I hope you'll hear our thanks as well. I'd also like to thank all those who showed up with little notice to help the water distribution roll out quickly and smoothly. I don't have a list of all of those people who participated, but you know who you are, and we want you to know that you were greatly appreciated. So to these city personnel standing here and on behalf of all the other Cape City employees that you all represent, which is a lot, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the citizens of Cape for the four days of nearly uninterrupted work you put in to make sure the community was constantly updated, given water when we might not have had any, and you made sure that we had our clean water flowing back as soon as possible. I have nothing to present to you except the sincere thanks of your community. So, we're all done. And one last person that I didn't call up because I didn't, I didn't know if she'd be here. Erica Bogumpole, would you please stand up with Alliance Water, who did a tremendous We can't thank Alliance enough for all the quick work and, and hard work that was done. Thank you. All right. Communications, City Council.
I'm going to jump in and say the same thing I've been saying now for years. Make sure that you keep your health and your, the health of your family and foremost of attention, especially this fall, COVID, any other types of things. We are entering flu season, so please make sure that you get vaccinated, boosted, wear a mask, socially distanced, wash your hands, and do all of those lovely things that your mother taught you how to do years ago about washing your hands, especially and staying safe during flu season. In addition to that, I just want to thank all of the, the city staff that we just mentioned. That was a wonderful honor, and thank you for, for doing a tribute to everybody. The water main break just fell right in the middle of Ward 1, right off 177. And if anybody happened to drive by at that time, I have never seen water shoot that far across the street and then bounce off a hill and roll onto 177. That was really an intense water, water main break. And so thanks to all the city staff for making that happen. That, that was definitely tough. I had somebody reach out to me because they had a, a small child, and they said, "You just don't realize how hard it is to use bottled water for infant formula." And it's like, yeah, you know, that really is, but within that four-day span, we were able to get that corrected. So thank you to the City of Cape. That was a great response to get us back up and online with safe, clean drinking water. That's it.
Yeah, Mayor, let me first say, anytime we have an, an incident or a homicide in our community, we take, there's great seriousness that comes with that. The reason why I want to even mention that is because I want to send kudos to the Major K Squad and the Cape Girardeau PD for apprehending that suspect in a speedy time. I know you guys all came together with the partners of the Major K Squad and to get that done, and I appreciate that. And that's a, that's a big deal. So, thank you, and thank you to that group.
I just wanted to point out that over the next three nights, we're going to have some very cold temperatures rolling through, so let's be cognizant of our homeless members of our community. If you can donate clothing, jackets, gloves, hats, boots, all, all those things are needed during this time. At this point, I don't have any information to share with you as to whether or not anyone will be able to be sheltered over the next three nights. I know the People's Church is unable to shelter right now, but you all do have clothing items available. So if you want to make donations, maybe that's the location you'd want to make donations. Also, let's be mindful of our pets. And water that is below the temperature of 32 degrees is frozen water, so that's not water anymore. So let's be aware that we should bring our animals in the next three nights. This is not something that they're used to. This is a huge temperature flux. So I just wanted to point those things out. And also, thank you again to all of our city staff and to Alliance Water for everything you did. And I also wanted to thank the volunteers that contacted me that wanted to help pass out water and to donate water, especially for our elderly citizens. So thank you so much.
Piggybacking off of that, don't forget to disconnect your hoses from your house as well. Commonly miss, or forgotten. We had a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting last week, and a couple of things from there, they wanted me to announce yet again that spaghetti day is November 10th. Come out for lunch and dinner, or both, and enjoy a day if you need, if you want to volunteer. They're, they're more than happy to accept any volunteers as well. Also got to hear an interesting presentation from the Cape Public Schools, their representative that was there, about their collaboration that they're doing with the Parks and Rec, with their intramural program. It's very innovative, in my opinion, very much needed for these kids, and be on the lookout for more information on that. It's going to be a great program for those kids and a great collaboration. So I commend the, the staff for the work that you've done on that. And then I also wanted to recognize an area of business for going above and beyond in support of our community. Mike Ketcherside with Mike's Mowing. We had a recreation trail that went around the area of Fountain Park, and it had some overgrowth and a lot of dead limbs and overgrown trees. And he voluntarily went in with his crew and cleaned up that trail, picked up all the debris, trimmed all the trees, trimmed it back, made it passable, passable, and beautified it for everybody. And so he just did that on his own accord, and I wanted to recognize him and give him our thanks as a city for that, that he did that. And then, on a closing note, I just found it interesting that each of the individuals that were up here are being recognized by Mayor Kinder. All of them, as I'm looking at, none of them, I guess, would, wants to be in front of a group like this and receive praise. They go about their jobs every day, and they take pride in the fact that nobody knows that they do what they do. And it takes an incident like that, that they rise to the forefront, and the cream rises to the top, and we realize how blessed we are to have the caliber leaders that we do in our departments. And I wanted to thank you guys and acknowledge that, that you guys, it probably pained you to be up here, but we are so grateful for everything you do. Thanks.
Anything else? All right. We have several items for discussion. Is there anyone? We have one registration for an advisory board applicant. Michelle Latham?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Latham. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to introduce myself as an applicant for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm a local business owner with American Family Agency in Cape Girardeau, and I'm totally invested in the future of our beautiful city. I'm married to Jason, a retired Army Chief Foreign Officer III, who is now a port engineer in the private sector. I have one son and three bonus children, along with two amazing bonus grandchildren. I'm a member of Lynwood Baptist Church, and I serve in the children's ministry. I'm also currently a member of Citizens Academy. For close to 30 years, I've worked in the insurance industry. Currently, my agency is ranked in the top 2% of the entire company. It's not only a top-ranked agency, but it has been profitable every year since its inception. By God's grace and mercy, I've built a team of seven from scratch. I have a very strong work ethic, and I know what it means to be responsible and critical in my decision-making, as well as what it means to find a balance and a consideration when making decisions that will impact others. I've applied for the Planning and Zoning Commission because I not only have relatable qualifications, and I do hope that you'll choose me based on those qualifications, but I'm also working to become more involved in our community, and I would love the opportunity to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Melissa Stickle, 2000 Perryville Road, and I'm here to give you an update from the October 12th Commission meeting. That was a really short agenda, so this will be short and sweet. We received a request to rezone 39 and 45 North Broadview Street on behalf of A.G. Jones Properties from M2 to M1. That was recommended for approval with six in favor, zero in opposition, and one abstention. We received a request to extend an exception that was granted in April regarding a buffer yard exception at 2821 Winter Green on behalf of Brickyard Properties and Development LLC. That was also recommended for approval with seven in favor, zero in opposition, and zero abstentions. In other commission news, we have a couple vacancies, and Ed Thompson, he recently resigned from the commission, and then Patrick Cuddy, his term is set to expire on November 1st, and he's no longer eligible for reappointment due to term limits. And we did have a wide variety of applicants for those vacancies, and the commission recommended two candidates to fill those vacancies. It was Chris Martin and Summer McCauley-Purdue. And then we have Derek Jackson's term. His term is set to expire on November 1st, and he is seeking reappointment. Short and sweet. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Next is the Consent Agenda Review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We added one item to the agenda tonight for your review. It's basically an MOU with Ross Real Estate. Basically, Ross Furniture submitted a proposal to the city to bore the water main extension under Kings Highway from the existing six-inch water main that runs along the east right-of-way of North Kings Highway for the required hydrant and water service line connection point. And we've endorsed this from a staff perspective, Council, and we would hope that, that you do the same. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We now enter into regular session of the meeting, and we need a call to order. Mr. Taylor. Here?
Here.
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 All right, thank you. Council, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Ms. Randall? Ms. Truxell? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Agenda is set. We have no public hearings tonight. We have a consent agenda before us. Mr. Young, would you please read that?
Bill 22153, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an air traffic control tower operating assistance grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. Bill 22153, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an air traffic control tower operating assistance grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. Bill 22154, an ordinance approving the record plat of the South Church subdivision. Bill 22154, an ordinance approving the record plat of the South Church subdivision. Bill 22155, an ordinance annexing land located on Silverado Trail into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22155, an ordinance annexing land located on Silverado Trail into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22156, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning newly annexed property located on Silverado Trail. Bill 22156, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning newly annexed property located on Silverado Trail. Bill 22157, an ordinance extending boundaries of Ward 4 to include property newly annexed into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22157, an ordinance extending the boundaries of Ward 4 to include property newly annexed into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22159, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Derek and Carla Cornelius for purposes of construction, maintaining, and operating a billboard at 3849 Business Park Place in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22159, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Derek and Carla Cornelius for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a billboard at 3849 Business Park Place in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22160, an ordinance accepting permanent utility easements from two property owners for Rock Garden subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22160, an ordinance accepting permanent utility easements from two property owners for Rock Garden subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22161, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Touchdown Development Group LLC for property located in the greater Cape Girardeau Business Park in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22161, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Touchdown Development Group LLC for property located in the greater Cape Girardeau Business Park in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 22162, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding and to hold harmless agreement with Ross Real Estate Trust for the construction of a water main along North Kings Highway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Council, we have a consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Mr. Thomas?
Second.
Ms. Randall, thank you. All those in favor then of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
You don't want to oppose? That agenda carries. We have five new ordinances before us. We will read each ordinance. The pertinent staff member will briefly describe that. Then, members of the audience, if there's anyone who wishes to make a comment about that ordinance, you may do so then. Please just approach the podium, give your name and address, if you would, and you can make your comment then. And that's how we, that's how we go about that. So, starting, and speakers, members of the audience, you would have three minutes to do so. Starting with Bill Number 22-158, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Simo Corner LLC for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a combined convenience store at 2090 North Sprig Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. Mr. Shiplin.
Good evening. The developers in attendance, Mr. Jackamyra, let him introduce himself in a moment. He's also here with the property manager of the Legends Apartments. But before I do so, there's just a couple of things I wanted to go over, kind of pursuant to the, the last discussion on this application. The first thing I wanted to quickly go through are the criteria for a special use permit In the ordinance, there are five criteria that have to be met in order for a special use permit to be approved. Those criteria are as follows. Number one, the proposed special use will not substantially increase traffic hazards or congestion. Number two, the proposed special use will not substantially increase traffic hazards Number two, the proposed special use will not substantially increase fire hazards. Number three, the proposed special use will not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. Number four, the proposed special use will not adversely affect the general welfare of the community. And number five, the proposed special use will not overtax public utilities. So, those are the criteria that the staff used in doing the analysis on the request and in writing the staff report. And that was the same criteria that the Planning and Zoning Commission used when they were evaluating the request as well. And that's, of course, your responsibility tonight as well, is to use those same criteria in evaluating the request. Also want to make a point of clarification. This was actually in the staff report at the last meeting, but I don't think it came up in the discussion. But this request is for a convenience store with fast food service in the convenience store and the vehicle fueling station, the gas pumps. Only the gas pumps are really the part that require the special use permit. So, the NC District, the current zoning, allows a convenience store by right, and that does include the sale of packaged liquor and candy and all those other type of things you normally find in a convenience store. So, even if the permit were to be denied, they could still build a convenience store. They just wouldn't be able to do the fuel pumps. So, there was some discussion about restrictions, and I do believe, you know, if you're looking ahead in that direction, you could probably impose a restriction maybe on the hours of operation. But as far as, you know, prohibition on sale of particular items, if they're already permitted by right in the NC District, you would not be able to add a condition prohibiting those. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jackamire.
Hi, Mayor. Excuse me, Mayor, Council. I'm Eric Jackamire, 7428 Meadow Road, Dallas, Texas. I understand this came up last meeting, and you guys requested that the owner slash developer of the apartment complex show up. So, here I am.
Thank you.
And... But I'm always happy for a really, you know, good excuse to come and visit the town. So, I try and get up as often as I can, anyway. And to your point, sir, I got my flu shot and booster just before coming here. So, we're in good shape. As politicians, you guys are well familiar with the concept of, you know, perception isn't always reality. And, you know, we have operated our apartment complex very well, I think, for four years, five years now. And last New Year's, there was a person went out and shot off a gun in the parking lot. He was instantly evicted. We started working immediately with the police department here in Cape. We are one of the very few crime-free multi-housing program members. We get to post this up at our property. We got, I think, is it 24-hour security service now, or is it just night? Night. So, we have a security service that patrols all night. We have had, as far as I know, no further issues with anything. I mean, other than your just regular run-of-the-mill stuff, but certainly no more shots being shot off. And working with the police department, I can also say that they are putting up a camera across the street from us on the Amhergan pole, and that should be up any time now. And there's also, I think you guys just approved the license plate readers, and they're going to be installing one of those at Lexington and Sprig. So, that's kind of the story about our apartments. I should point out that I'm not, even though we're... Simo Corners LLC is the applicant, and that would be kind of me. We're not the ones actually developing the convenience store that will go on the corner. So, if there's specific questions about the convenience store, I'm not able to answer any of those. And I'm not sure if Chris Taylor is here yet. I know he represents the people who are actually building the convenience store. So, I've probably blown through a lot of my three minutes, but available for questions.
So, the entity that is developing the convenience store is a related entity, right? What you guys...
It's not a related entity. We're selling the property, but we need to get it... In order to sell it, we need to get the special use permit.
Okay. As a property owner, and then you're going to deed over the land, or are you leasing the land?
Deed it. It'll be a sale.
Okay. Do you know, and not to speak for them, but do you know their experience with developing such type businesses? Is that what they do? Do they have a numerous history of developing convenience stores, gas stations?
That is my understanding, is that they are in multiple states. They operate a bunch of convenience stores. But beyond that, I'm afraid I don't really know. But I felt when they first were... When Chris Cole first approached us with them, I felt pretty comfortable with them.
Would you mind explaining a little bit more about the process you've been going through this year with the... To secure the crime-free housing accreditation and...
I may need to... I have my general manager here.
Sure. Great.
Israel, you want to come up and tell them your name and address, and you can speak to them about the process?
Hello, Your Honor and the Council. My name is Israel Viardial. I live at 270 North Sprig, or The Legends Apartments. So, since we've gotten here in February, and we kind of started the crime-free stuff, our security guards have been working from about 8:00 to about 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning. Every time we have, you know, any little incident, they kind of call me in, on top of, you know, police coming in. Since then, we haven't really had any major incidents that have happened, along with, you know, the past shootings. Nothing major, just, you know, kind of little stuff here and there. But ever since, we've been working to get, you know, the community safer. So, for example, get the gates working, make sure everything is good to where parents feel more at home or more comfortable with their students or residents, you know, feeling at home, so they're not in danger. Other than that, our security does, I kind of make it a point to where they make the residents feel comfortable. So, any questions they have, they can go to security. They know that. It's more of just a comfortable feeling for them.
I have a question. So, everything you're sharing, is it any relation to the convenience store of services or things that you all be doing? Or you're just sharing your part of what you're doing with Legends? I mean, does it have any relation to or application to the convenience store? Maybe some concerns that constituents or different things have, even though we know what Ryan shared with us as well?
Sure. We're just the apartment complex.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think the initial questions were based on the understanding, now the wrong understanding, that your management group would also be kind of running the convenience store. But you have plans to... That's going to be a different... Okay.
I will say that, you know, getting back to perception, our residents are probably our best indicator of perception. And from, you know, we... In student housing, you kind of live August to August, so you start your renewal period, well, right about now, as a matter of fact. And he was just telling me how great it's going. But last year, and every year, but especially last year, we actually well exceeded the national average for renewals. So, I mean, we can only lease to juniors and seniors, and so at least half your people seem to be moving out every year because the seniors go away. And so, we're constantly having to bring in new people. And I think it's a good indicator of the type of property we run, that our renewal rates are far higher. I mean, 50% higher than the national average.
What's your occupancy rate?
Just over 91%.
We're about to hit 92% by November.
You don't just rent your units to school students, correct?
Under the fair housing law, we are required to lease to anyone who walks through the door. It tends to be fairly self-selecting because we lease individual bedrooms that are fully furnished. So, I'm reminded of when I did my first project 12 years ago in Texas. I had someone who I think was shopping me for a fair housing, you know, not following the rules. And they wanted a two-bedroom. And I said, "I don't think you're going to be very happy with our pricing on a two-bedroom." You know? And they're like, "Well, how much is it?" I'm like, "Well, it's about $1,500 if you want the whole thing." And they're like, "Well, that's, you know, really expensive." I'm like, "Yeah, I know." Because we lease by the bedroom, not by the unit.
But I appreciate you sharing that. But my point is that they're not just students residing at Legends.
That's correct, although they're probably almost all students. I mean, usually, we have a couple of non-students living there.
I think the concern from the individuals that spoke at our last meeting were the type of people that are renting at Legends. I think that was the concern. And really, this isn't the venue that... Really, to have you speak on behalf or in defense of your property, that's a whole nother issue. I just think that, you talk about perception. I like facts, and I like numbers. And I know that it's not just students that live there. I know some people that are elderly that have lived in your apartments. So, we try to blame certain behaviors and actions on certain members of the community, but we need to be careful with how we perceive rental units and the people that are renting at your location. Again, I don't think that you being here is going to have any bearing on whether or not we agree to pass this special use permit. But thank you. I appreciate you flying up from Texas.
I just wanted to chime in. I've heard a lot from the community, the community surrounding this... Surrounding the potential filling station or convenience store. They're just generally concerned. They're concerned about the actual build-out of the structure and what the welfare would be like of that surrounding area. It's high density. You know, we've got the enclave apartments, which aren't in the city limits, but right across the street. Then you've got Legends, and then you've got Cape Trails, and you've got Red Hawk Commons. And so, there's just general concern because of that density. People are densely packed in Ward 1. And any little thing that could upset the apple cart whenever it comes down to how people interact in our neighborhood, how people drive through, what they purchase, where they go, where they come from, all those different things really does change the dynamic of that intersection. And so, it's just something to really consider. It changes a lot of things, knowing that your unit actually isn't... You guys are strictly selling this property to another individual organization that will be developing the property. And so, it's just, it's interesting. But I have heard just a lot of concerns from citizens and constituents about that development on that corner. But thank you for coming. Yeah.
Just to recap, what the staff said is it's allowed by right, except for selling gas. So... Decide not to sell gas, then it's... Again, yeah, not my... Right. I was asked to be here, so I flew in.
And we appreciate that, for sure. Mr. Shrimplin, if you could, getting back to the specifics of what we're voting on, which is the special use permit question. If you could just speak a little bit more... There were several of these criterion that you mentioned that I think were... The concerns were voiced at our last meeting by residents who live, you know, in homes in that area. Specifically, just as Dan mentioned, the traffic issues, not adversely affecting the character of the neighborhood, general welfare of the community. Could you just speak a little bit to those issues? And how the planning and zoning, you know, might look at those?
Sure. Well, I'm going to work from the staff report because that's what we, you know, based our analysis on. As far as the traffic standpoint, you know, this property is located at an intersection of two streets. According to the major street plan, they're considered secondary arterial streets. And the site plan shows three driveways, one on Lexington and two on Sprig. So, there's multiple entrance and exit points, which kind of helps alleviate congestion. And they're adequately sized. In fact, one of them, they're requesting a slightly wider driveway, and that's being driven by the delivery truck, necessity for the truck turns. So, they've got several access points. So, from that standpoint, we didn't feel that that would be something that would cause traffic hazards or congestion. Certainly, the traffic will increase. There's nothing there now, so, I mean, there is going to be increase in traffic. But the criteria is congestion. And so, based on the way the site is designed, we don't feel that it's going to cause a congestion issue. The second criteria with regard to fire hazards, you know, obviously, a fueling station in addition to convenience store, all that is going to have to follow codes for that. So, there's a lot of safety regulations that govern that. So, this being a new development, there's no reason why I shouldn't be in full compliance with the codes. And then, of course, there are other entities that regulate the operation of the fuel station. With regard to adversely character the... Adverse character of the neighborhood, the NC District is a little unusual compared to some of our other zoning districts in that it has certain criteria to ensure that development does not adversely affect a surrounding neighborhood. It actually has a restriction on square footage of the type of use, and it also contains a general criterion that the architectural design has to be compatible with the surrounding buildings. We generally don't have that in our other districts, except for our central business district downtown. So, and then there's also regulations we have for any development with regard to landscaping and buffer yards. So, those would apply as well. The fourth criterion about not adversely affecting the general welfare of the community, a lot of that goes back to the general character of the neighborhood. But we also acknowledge that, you know, that particular area of the city does not have a lot of commercial uses, goods, and services available. The Red Star area, you know, really don't have much. You kind of have to go downtown or over toward the university to access those goods and services. And that was part of the consideration when the property was rezoned to NC to begin with. It started out as R4, just like The Legends was. And so, I think it actually got rezoned the same time Legends did. I think it was R1 and got rezoned to R4. But the notion was, the city envisioned a commercial node at that intersection. And then the last one about not overtaxing public utilities. We've already verified, you know, that it won't overtax the city utilities. And we believe there's adequate, you know, electric surface and gas out there for the proposed use. That's also part of the engineer's due diligence, is to make sure that those services are available and adequate. Does that help?
It does. Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to make a comment on this ordinance?
My name is Lily Clages. I live at 1809 Deland Street. I'm a leader with Cape Tenants. And I actually have a question for Mr. Jackamire. Does Legends have a rental permit with the city?
Ma'am, that's actually not...
It's not on the grant...
...an issue that we're discussing tonight. It's the special permit. And it's also not a time for those of the podium to interact with other audience members.
All right.
As Ms. Truxell mentioned, there might be other issues involved that we could take up at a different time.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd just like to make it aware that according to the data that the city has, Legends does not have a rental permit. That's it. Yes, sir? Would you like to come forward?
My name's Mike Welk. I live in the 200 block of Independence. Now, where does the ownership of Simo Corner LLC live?
Sir, if you can direct questions.
May I ask you or Mr. Shrimplin, where does the ownership of Simo Corner LLC reside? Where are their main offices from which this will be managed?
That's what we've discovered, is that that is the Legends, because they are the current landholders for that property.
Well, I'm not asking about them. I'm asking about the new owner, in case this gets passed.
The new operator, yeah.
That's our question. Where do they live?
We don't know the answer to that.
We don't know that.
Okay. I think that would be a good thing to find out. When I think about... When I think about convenience stores in this town, I don't know what percentage Winks, Kids, and Roads make up, but those people live here. And they are not only invested financially, and they want a lucrative cash flow coming out of those stores, but they are part of the community. And for the most part, they're active parts of the community, and they care more than just about making money. And the problem with... The problem we have here is that that has been our problem at Legends. And they're the ones that are trying to sell this property. And it's contingent upon them selling it if the store can even come. And getting the use permit, I should say. And so, I think we need to look at who's going to own it and how it's going to be managed. You know, that's a problem when store managers are responsible for the things that go on on a high-profile corner like that one is going to be. You know, at that corner, northeast or northwest across the street is another apartment complex, probably with mostly students. probably with mostly students, and I don't know the name of that one. And then directly south, of course, is Cape Trails, which is operated by the same company that owns the one over on Bloomfield. And as I told you last time, I drove for cargo for about three years, which for those of you who don't live here, that's an Uber-type operation. I delivered both, both customers, I picked up both people and food. And Legends is a beautiful place. It was not such a beautiful place to work in. I was glad to hear that the gate's been fixed. I quit two years ago, and the gate still hadn't been fixed. So, but of the three, the other two are not gated, and they're not, they don't have fences, and they both feel better to be in and around them. And so now we're going to set, now we're going to set a convenience store in the middle of those three, and we don't even know who the ownership is.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to comment?
I'm Laura McGinty, and I live at 625 Sylvan Lane, just a few blocks away from the proposed location of the convenience store. And I just happened to be here two weeks ago at the meeting and found out about this, so this was all kind of new to me, and it still continues to be. But I think what Mr. Welk said, we need to find out probably who the potential builders are going to be and the way they operate, number one. I'm for small business. I'm for large business. I have been, my family and I have business in town, so it's not, I'm not in opposition to new business. But the information that we've been presented with appears that that area does have quite a bit of crime going on within the roads, which is not far down the street from the Legends. And this would be on the other side of the Legends. And it just seems, in my opinion, as a close neighbor. And I also represent several of my neighbors. I did take a poll, I walked around the neighborhood Friday and spoke, knocked on several doors, and they, I've got names and numbers if you want them, but they told me I could speak on their behalf. So there are more neighbors in my neighborhood that would be happy to come forward another day, because I didn't think we'd need to be here tonight speaking about it again. But since we are, I just want to encourage you one more time to highly reconsider allowing the establishment of a convenience store, gas station, especially one if they sell alcohol on that corner. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I'm Chuck McGinty, Laura's husband, 625 Sylvan Lane. I often wondered why that piece of property outside of Legends sat there for so long with the weeds five feet tall, but it's a prime, prime location and probably a real moneymaker. And I'm pro-business. We've had a business here a long time. It's a great town to do business in. I'm also aware that a couple from out of state moved here and made a sizable investment right across the street and built this big brick building that is called Redeem and Recover. And I don't know, you know, a lot of people can drink alcohol just fine. And with some people, it's like a Chinese handcuff. And you've got this sizable investment right across the street from this proposed convenience store that these people, they got help from everywhere to build this church-like edifice over there. And there's a city ordinance that says 500 feet, I think it is, from edifice to edifice. And I don't know that there's that much space there. But it's sort of a slap in the face to people that have invested so heavily over there on Lexington, right across the property from there, right across the street. They have a sizable investment there. And they're trying to help people get away from alcohol and drugs. And you are inviting this temptation right in their lap. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. I'm Beth Ferguson. I'm Warren Check's neighbor, also on Sylvan Lane. And I really like to piggyback off of Mr. Preston, because we are really concerned. We have so many shootings, and we have a ring, you know, that thing that goes off on your house. A lot of neighborhood watches that hear shootings a lot around the area. And, you know, we live there every day, and we watch and hear what's going on, and we are concerned. And we are really against this convenience store, because we don't really like what it represents. And you talked about, you know, there's a gas station within a half a mile, three quarters of a mile, so it's not that far to go get gas. And that's pretty much it. We're just not for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to ask Ryan, can I ask you one more question? I'm sorry. Me and Ryan, buddy, so. So, for clarity, for understanding, for the factual information that the staff gathered and then presented it to the Planning and Zoning Committee, if we as a council move forward with the, with this, everything will go forward, you know, as far as getting the special use permit? If we as a council do not, as a majority, decide not to move forward, they still have the opportunity for the special use permit, but not the filling, fueling stations?
Right. They wouldn't be able to build the fueling station. The convenience store is permitted anyway.
Could still proceed with anything that they want to say.
The question is, what we don't know, because we don't have a representative here, is whether the potential buyer, the operator of the convenience store, would still be interested if they can't have fuel.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't, we don't have that information, but...
So, and we are very open to hearing what the community's saying, because that's important to us. But then we also have to adhere to what the facts are, what the research and everything done, with the staff and the city and everything. So I just kind of wanted to understand if they decide, either which way, the convenience store still can go into play with the drugs without the, without the council moving forward to vote in a unanimous. So, I just wanted to make sure the community understands that, too. But we are hearing what everybody on both sides has.
Yeah, that's what the, the question at hand is whether whatever business goes in there can sell fuel. That's what we're considering.
Right.
It's not what type of business can go in there, or if a business can go in there.
Yeah, and I also want to point out, just let this be a teaching moment for everyone that, you know, when we have rezoning and we do a public hearing, we're rezoning, that's the time to come forward. With my ward, I make every attempt to let people know if there's something on the table that's going to affect residents around the area. I mean, there's not a lot that goes on in Ward 5, but that's the time to come forward, that's the time to share your concerns so that we can stop the process then. At this point, there's no way to stop the process. We tabled the discussion for this situation so we could get information, hopefully have, we had some members of Legends come forward. But at this point, legally, the only thing that we can do this evening is to decide whether or not the special use permit is valid or invalid. So, but in the future, and I hear all your concerns, because I'm concerned. I lived at, in Ward 4 over at Amblewood in Brookshire, and that gas station has brought a lot of transient walking, you know, through that area. So I understand that concern. But again, if, if you reach out to your council member, try to get information before we have council meetings so that you can know about the public hearings, so that if something's going to affect you, you can come forward and speak and gather your residents in the neighborhood to come forward at that time. Because we listen to you, we hear you, that's why we tabled this conversation before. But at this point, I just want this to be a teaching moment for all of us going forward.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We're still in the, actually, still in the public discourse portion of this. Sorry. Before we, because I know council has comments, too. That will come after we get it.
Right, I'm just trying to quote.
I just want to make sure if there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to, to speak on this issue. Okay. This issue is already on the table. We have, we put it there last time. So council, sorry, just wanted to make sure we kind of closed that portion first. Mr. Gahr, did you have a comment?
Thing that I was going to say is that, that the criteria is, the staff has given us, there's five criteria. And now, technically, some of those criteria that I'm assuming that staff, you guys said yes on all of them, I'm assuming. Some of them I disagree with staff on. I disagree with adversely affect the general welfare of the community. I don't know that answer. I technically, I'd, I'd probably answer no right now from, from what I've seen and heard about that area. I mean, no offense to Legends, I'm not convinced that all of their issues are resolved. That's just what I've, what I've seen and from what I've heard from my constituents who own property around that area. So, so I could make the argument that on number four, I disagree with staff. Number one, substantially increased traffic hazards or congestion. Again, I might disagree with staff. And so there, I think it becomes, the legal question is, is that if I disagree with that, those two issues, and what if, if council disagrees with staff, then our legal bounds is that we disagree with staff on how you graded this, and then could still issue no on the fuel, and then let them try to sell a property without a fuel special use permit?
And just to be clear, it's not just staff. This was the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Correct, correct. But staff, but P&amp;Z gets their recommendation from staff as well.
Yeah, and I want to point out that, you know, obviously, we weren't aware of any of these issues at the time the staff was making a decision and writing the staff report and the conditions of approval. None of this type of information came to light. Now, we knew the Legends had had some issues, but we weren't aware of any type of concern from any of the neighbors out there. We didn't know if that issue had been resolved and if there were other issues. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, you know, we, we posted the sign, just like we do. So it's right there on the site. Anybody that lives near there, drives by there, could see the information about the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And nobody came to the hearing. So we didn't even have any information at that point. That's why the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, was comfortable recommending approval, because there, that just, that information didn't come to light until the last, you know, to the council meeting.
Mine is more of a statement in saying that I understand where staff came up with their, I'm just saying I don't...
Yeah, and, you know, and that's, you're right. I mean, that's, that's your duty, is to look at the criteria individually and each of you to determine if you think the, each of those criterion are met.
And I go back to the fact that I hear the underlying concerns, and, and they're echoed loudly, but the question at hand as a point of order is whether we're going to approve the special use permit of allowing them to sell fuel in conjunction with the convenience store. They are, whomever wants to develop that property can still put in a convenience store and sell everything that you want besides fuel. So is the fuel part of it really the underlying concern that's going to drive up all of that, these issues? Because, you know, that's what we have to ask ourselves.
Right. And that's, that's the thing. I mean, we, I'd like to see some type of, you know, criminal study that says if you put a gas station in, that increases crime. You know, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. But again, this is just whether or not they can have gas pumps. If it was, if it was the question of whether or not the convenience store was going into place, I think we'd be having a different conversation. But again, I agree with you completely that this is just a point of order of whether or not they can have fuel pumps.
Mr. Shrimplin and maybe Mr. Young, if you could just clarify, just so we're all definitely on the same page, regarding the, the current zoning of that space is neighborhood commercial. And so, just again, tell us what then, let's, let's say we deny the special use permit. Which would effectively say you can't put gas pumps on this property. What then could the developer do, and where would our decision-making have to, have to fall for that? In other words, if they wanted to put a convenience store without the gas, we would legally have to let them do that, correct?
Yeah, it would just be a matter, because the zoning allows that use, all they have to do is apply for their permits. So as long as they meet all the code requirements, building code, site layout, stormwater drainage, all that, then basically the permit would have to be approved at that point. Once, once meets the code, all comments addressed.
Or anything else, any other kind of establishments that would fall under that?
And it'd be, they have to get their liquor, the liquor review board, that license, but if the person that's applying for their license doesn't have any cause of determination, that they could, then it would be discriminatory to go against them.
Process and all those criteria. I think one of the citizens mentioned about a distance from a church. That distance is 200 feet under our ordinance. Just looking at the site plan, I think the building is probably 200 feet from the Lexington Avenue right-of-way line. So I think it's well, well away from the church. And I'm not aware of any other churches or schools that would be within that proximity. So, I mean, we can check that, but it appears that that, that would not be an issue.
And it's not the question at hand tonight?
Right.
Okay, council, any other questions or concerns? All right, hearing none then. Sorry? Oh, yes, sir.
Can I speak one more time?
Yes.
Ryan, thank you for all your work and answers.
The civil engineer, Chris Kaler, is, who represents the people who are going to build the thing, he's desperately trying to get here. So he says he's like a minute or two minutes out, so he may be able to speak to your question that I was not able to. And to answer one of the comments from the, from the neighbors, yeah, it's a moneymaking proposition, obviously. We had someone else, actually, it's been vacant for a long time because we've been looking for the right people to go there. Dollar General has offered me twice as much money for that corner as the convenience people are paying. And that's not, in my opinion, the best use for that corner. I think a convenience store with a sandwich shop serves the community far better than a Dollar General. But if I'm being told I got to go do something else, then we can go do a Dollar General, I guess. But I don't think that's the best use there. So maybe Chris will get here by the time you vote. I don't know.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay. Hearing none then. All in favor of Bill number 22-158, please say aye. Wait, it's last meeting.
Oh, okay.
That was still, still in effect. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries four to two. Thank you. Next, Bill number 22-163, an ordinance accepting the quitclaim deeds and permanent utility easements for improvements at the intersection of Stonecrest and Browstone Drive for Lilmac East 3rd Subdivision in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. Ms. Brunkie.
Good evening, mayor, councillor, council. The ordinance you have in front of you this evening accepts two quitclaim deeds for new right-of-way and two permanent utility easements from two different property owners in the Rock Gardens subdivision, subdivision, which is a neighboring subdivision to Lilmac East 3rd subdivision. So these deeds and permanent utility easements were necessary to connect those two subdivisions. The developers have worked together, and the property owners as well, to have those easements and deeds donated.
All right. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this ordinance? Sorry, I thought she was coming up to the podium. All right, seeing none. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill number 22-163?
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor then of Bill number 22-163, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 22-164, an ordinance vacating the city's interest in a portion of Hickory Street right-of-way and retaining a permanent utility easement in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. Ms. Brunkie.
Good evening. So this ordinance vacates about a block worth of Hickory Street right-of-way. This section of... This section of right-of-way, it's between, it's kind of at the corner of Highway 74 and South Kings Highway. There's new development going in there in that corner, they need some additional room. The city have checked our plans and we have no plans to develop that right-of-way. We do need to retain a permanent utility easement over that right-of-way because we have a water line in that area, but the city staff did not see any reason not to be able to vacate that right-of-way.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Seeing none then. Is there a motion to approve bill number 22-164?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none then, all in favor of bill number 22-164, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 22-165, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission transportation alternatives funds program agreement for the North Cape Rock Drive sidewalks, project phase one in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. Mr. McElroy.
Good evening, mayor, city council. This is a grant project that we're very excited about. We were successful for both phase one and phase two grant applications for Cape Rock Drive sidewalk project. The ordinance before you tonight authorizes the city manager to execute agreements with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. Once completed, sidewalks will span from Kings Highway, where we're installing crosswalks leading to Arena Park as part of the 2020 grant program, to existing sidewalks on Perryville Road. The total project for both phases is estimated to cost $990,000, of which federal funds will cover $686,400 and $303,600 from local funds. Phase one is estimated to be $660,000. That would extend sidewalks from Kings Highway to Brookwood Drive, and then a dogleg on Brookwood Drive to connect existing sidewalks on Janet Drive, leading to Alma Shrotter Elementary Federal share of that would be $422,400, and the local share would be $237,600. Phase two is estimated to be $330,000. That would extend sidewalks from Brookwood Drive to Perryville Road. Federal share of that is $264,000, with the local share of $66,000. Once the agreements are approved and were issued the notice to proceed, we intend to let both phases concurrently.
Okay. We'll remember that for the next ordinance as well. Repeat all that. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve bill number 22-165?
So moved. So excited.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, this is just, I can't even tell you how much better safety we're going to have in this area, especially with people that are walking, whether they're walking to school, walking their dogs. This community and this area has been waiting for sidewalks for quite a long time, so I just can't wait till this is completed.
Mr. McElroy, I was going to ask a question. Can you just tell us where the, what funding sources come, locally, where we're-
The local share will come from TTF six funds that we have dedicated for sidewalk.
Great. Okay. All right, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of bill number 22-165, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And bill number 22-166, much like it, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission transportation alternatives funds program agreement for the North Cape Rock Drive sideways project, phase two, in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. And Mr. McElroy included the conversation about this previously. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Seeing none. Is there then a motion to approve bill number 22-166?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right then, all those in favor of bill number 22-166, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We have several appointments tonight. Three appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those were voted on by council, and Derek Jackson, Chris Martin, and Summer McCauley-Purdue were voted. Is there a motion to approve these three?
A motion.
Second.
Ms. Randall, Mr. Cresson, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That, those appointments carry. We also have two appointments to the Board of Appeals, and this board is a little, quite a bit different than many of our commissions and boards, because there are qualifications, specific job experience-related qualifications for that board. We have two nominees that I believe have perhaps both served already, but we have no new applicants for those boards, and so there's a, is there a motion to appoint Mark Strickland and Melanie Cantrell to the Board of Appeals for the term expiring June 4th, 2027, with the finding that special expertise is required, given some exceptions that we just stated?
So moved.
Mr. Thomas, Ms. Truxell, any further discussion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Mr. Strickland and Mr. Cantrell are voted in for that. Lastly, under other business, this is a time when members of the public may bring new items to the council that are not on the current agenda. I will say, since we seem to have some new people here, I'll just remind you about a couple things. As before, you have, members of the audience have three minutes to speak. You will be asked to come to the podium if you choose to do so, and there, we have a pre-registration requirement for these comments. For tonight, there are two people who have pre-registered, and I will call those names. Council is not allowed to respond to the person at the podium if you will leave your contact information. Actually, I've got contact information. If there's any follow-up that's needed, we can do so tomorrow or in the week, but we are not allowed to engage in conversation about what you might be bringing up. Okay, so first we have Cynthia Durgan.
I'm Cynthia Durgan. I live at 2824 Oakshire Circle, Cape Girardeau, and I'm here to speak for Street Level Cape Girardeau, a grassroots homelessness advocacy group. I'd like you to imagine that you drive up to a T-intersection where a sign on the left says "One Way, Do Not Enter," and a sign on the right says "Private Drive, No Entry." Suppose you informed the city of this situation and they did nothing, and suppose you attended six meetings to remind them and they did nothing. How would you review, how would you view that city council? And when someone got hurt at that intersection, how would you view the city's accountability? The city of Cape Girardeau puts unsheltered people who are trying to survive homelessness at just such an intersection. City ordinance forbids sleeping on public land, but sleeping on private land is trespassing and breaking into an empty house to sleep is burglary. In 2019, the U.S. Supreme Court announced it would not take up the Martin versus the city of Boise case. This means that the Ninth Circuit's ruling that cities must not punish homeless people for sleeping in public places if shelter options are not practically available stands. Because that decision involves protection of the Eighth Amendment, this is an important national precedent. Because the city of Cape Girardeau bans camping on public land, Street Level insists that the city must also provide an alternative. We call upon the city to immediately adopt the following measures. First, establish an orderly, safe, supervised tenting area on the grounds of a city park near public restrooms. Allow sleeping in parked vehicles at a nearby parking lot. Second, grant our homeless neighbors free access to the showers at the Osage Center during low-use times. Third, until the city has adequate, appropriate, accessible places for our homeless neighbors to stay, exempt them from the relevant parts of the city's Code of Ordinances, Sections 185 through 187. We believe that the city's current situation may violate the Eighth Amendment rights and other civil and human rights of our neighbors who are surviving homelessness, leaving the city vulnerable to lawsuits. We urge you, we implore you, to take the ameliorating measures listed above immediately. I will here read you part of the majority opinion of that case, Martin v. Boise. Shall I continue?
No, I'm afraid that's your three minutes, but thank you for-
I will give it to you in text.
Thank you. We next have Damon Dillard.
How are you all?
Very good.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you.
Nice to see all you. My name is Damon Dillard, I'm a Missouri resident, and I have called the wonderful Cape Girardeau my home for the last 29 years. Cape is a terrific place in all kinds of ways. I think you would all agree that the Cape Library is a strong asset for our local area, would you not? It's a strong resource for our students, for our schools. Want to move now to a concept of equal rights. The First Amendment grants our opportunity to speak our minds, right? Would you agree with that? I can say whatever I want to say, and you have the right to disagree with what I have to say. It's your right. But if I come to a disagreement with you about our values, and we agree to disagree, but then I come to your home and I demand that you and your family comply with my values, that's no longer a First Amendment right, it's now an act of terrorism and tyranny, tyranny. Those exact same forced values are happening at the Cape Library. It's happening in the teens room. You know anybody know what I'm talking about? You've heard a little bit of this, I imagine. Values that I don't share and that people in this room don't share are being forced on children of 12 years old and even younger in the Cape Library. Books like this. Gender Explorers, designed for 12-year-olds, which is a book that talks about eight-year-old trans boys. It's encouraging children to question their gender identity. Heinous books like this, Naked, which go into very sexually explicit activities. The Trans Generation, books again that are targeted at 12-year-olds to question whether or not, and they're encouraged to question their gender. Q, Letter, all types of transgender information at the Cape Library. Now, do I want these books banned? No, I don't. But these books violate Missouri state statutes when it comes to decency, when it comes to protecting our children as minors. I'm not going to read any of these books to you because the content is profane, is obscene, and I'm not going to waste any time trying to convince you that these are- If you want to see these books, they're available on Patriots United YouTube channel, that's all you have to look for in Google, it'll take you to them, Expose, as we've done some research there. Explicit books for 12-year-olds are students, aren't they? 12-year-olds in Cape Girardeau are students. We just talked about them being intrinsically related to the Cape Library through our schools. All right. There are two specific statutes that I want to read. The first one is New SB 775, is Missouri state law that is preventing, providing sexually explicit materials to minors, and it states, "Offense of providing explicit sexual materials to student. This act provides that a person commits the offense of providing explicit sexual material to a student if such person is affiliated with a public or private elementary or secondary school in an official capacity, such knowing of its character, a person provides, assigns, supplies, distributes, loans, or coerces acceptance of any of the approved, providing sexually mysterious to students who possess the purpose of a official capacity," I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, "with an official capacity of providing these materials to students. Now, the Cape Library is acting in official capacity, working with our schools to provide these materials for students. I ask the council to provide a resolution that you will support Missouri state laws and prevent the distribution of sexually explicit materials to our students. Will you do that?"
Mr. Dillard, thank you for your time. And that concludes our meeting for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Making a motion to adjourn, mayor.
Is there a second? Sorry. Is there a second? Ms. Randall?
Yes, second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?